Things that shouldn't work.
So things.
Eight thirty, I'm getting as long.
Okay. This July fifteenth meeting of the Raleigh County Commission to order. Please everybody join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Halfway through the month of July already. And it's a hot one.
Yes.
Humidity, dew point, temperature, uh nasty. And and as we'll get through it. I'm ready for fall football season.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
You gotta go through this first.
Yeah, this isn't my favorite time of the year, to say the least, so it is what it is, so. But we'll start off with some public comment that's made that we have. We got Evan, okay?
Morning Evan McDonald of the Works, just wanted to give a heads up that we will be closing the transfer station on the twenty seventh for the scale installation. So I would notice everything.
Okay, okay.
Notified by all the hall.
That was good, thanks. Anybody else? Seeing now we'll close off public comment and start off then with some commissioner comments and Commissioner McKinney.
Yeah, well, I don't really have anything more. I had a quite weakened at home trying to stay cool. It's not recent since nobody.
Well, let's see, I did this about the same, but I did. Uh, did have some personal appointments downtown. Friday did yard work in the morning, including treating some poison poison weeds in the back, poison siding and oak and all that. So plus to the creek, they're really having a good time, but. Let's say the weekend was pretty quiet, tried to stay cool, met with some friends, went church on Sunday. I've been taking my dog over to Wildcat Park later in the evening, stay out of the heat. You know, sidewalks and stuff. Tell you what, that's, we really enjoy that park. It's really well taken care of by the county, so. Sunday went over the short agenda and documents for today's meeting. That's about it.
I didn't have a whole lot either. Um, Friday afternoon, I did attend and watched the active shooting thing on our high school. Um, very informative, very eye opening. One of one hopes to never have an incident like the one they're training for with emergency services and response. It's good to know that um the people will be prepared if. God forbid something was ever to happen. I thought finally interesting that you're the only ones in the area that does that type of training. Nobody else does. Um, so, um. Yeah, um, glad, I guess we're prepared. Um, they've done this for ten years. So it's it's not new. Um, they got it down pretty good and they trained for different scenarios, so scenarios that have happened and they kind of let it play out and um group of volunteers that were working, they're talented. Very talented, just leave it at that. So rest of the weekend was pretty quiet. It was really just too hot to be out doing anything, to be honest with you. To get caught up on a couple of things at home that have been put off, which is, I guess, good, but outside of that, everything was pretty quiet, so that's all I got.
This is meeting, first item is Raleigh County Employee Action Form for Perly Jackman, a customer service rep in the treasurer's office for separation. Next item is review minutes from July eleventh and approval.
I didn't say anything. Um, I'd make a motion um to approve the minutes as written from July eleventh, twenty twenty four.
Second. It moved in second to approve the minutes from the July eleventh meeting of the Raleigh County Commission, written, all in favor.
Review tentative, any changes? City county needs to come up for their state. The conference topics.
Do we have anything? The in the government motion is still on for that twenty second.
Yep.
As far as I know, yes.
Do they help her? Speak her.
I think Amanda's gonna give an update on comprehensive plan, I think.
Oh, yeah, cuz she's supposed to be.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, yesterday.
Yeah. I think she confirmed that when we talked about it last week.
When's when's where she coming back?
We got a birthday week, we just come in.
Today.
Today, oh, okay. And then it was just a few days for months.
Yeah, this is what?
Friday.
Friday. He's always been on the hottest day of the year.
We, did you guys get on that list or discussion on county administrators? Maybe you can't. Must just been on on two and again. Somebody asked about, you know, how do you, you know, is that? Some ask opinions that several started listing who was on and off. And I asked, how many are there? And I said, but there is this, there is a math on the, I don't know, K C A somewhere. There's something now, except it wasn't up to date. There's about twenty places that have.
Tony Kennedy.
Two of them. Johnson and and Sedgwick have man county managers. The rest of them all is called administrator. Somebody, I said, yeah, I don't, you know. Don't want somebody blocking us between, you know, between us and and department heads. And they said, oh, well, administrators are just, that's an open door. It's just a way to get through. You know, can't managers tend to be door. Except. I looked on Fenny County. They've got a thing, administration, a list of rules for county commissioners. General commissioners should visit county departments only as a group, that is, as board of county commissioners. And you got a whole thing, don't talk, you know, individual commissioners should visit departments infrequently with an extreme degree of caution.
Really?
I mean, this and their official, I mean, they've got this, they've got a listing of things.
Can't talk to people?
John has talked about that before, that I'm not all that familiar with county administrators. Yeah. John has talked about that before.
If a commissioner determines it's necessary to visit with a department head without other board members, the full board should be advised that the visit would occur and the subject of the visit should be reviewed with the board. I mean, that's until I, something I said, that's not the way we work.
I'd like to go.
Like I said, I talk to at least one department head every week or something usually.
It's interesting to put on the website.
But even on the website, the directions of how the.
I think they're serious.
Yeah.
Must have had some problems in the past or something.
Well, it's that's him.
Yeah.
Were administrators, theirs now.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if it's his doing or what it was that way before. Tight, tight role model. The others talked, I mean, when they talked about it, it's the administrators just kind of taking some of the work off of the clerk that they have. Like H R payroll and uh a lot or a budget. The administrator does have to take.
Oh, yeah.
Which, you know, I I can see, I mean, I can see how that might be a little help, but. You know, I said, and I, and why I said clerk's been here since ninety six, things run pretty well here. Because somebody said, oh, it's too much work on a clerk. And I'm like, well, he's been here, you know, since ninety six, things seem to be going fine here.
Or is it being retired? Or maybe something we'll have to deal with.
Yeah.
Short term. Oh, that's interesting.
I'd say it's and it must be, everybody must be like me on Sunday, you can eat Sunday afternoon meetings when they look at their staff. Because the guy posted Saturday morning that a one or two comments and Sunday afternoon, all of a sudden, boom. Everybody started going back, we're talking about it.
Everybody's in the house over the weekend too, yeah.
Yeah, we get some rain.
Yeah, it'd be nice watering watering the plants last night.
I noticed there was quite a few people out on Friday mowing and doing some stuff.
I mowed on Friday morning. I don't think the grass is gonna grow a whole lot this one. What is that extension? Um, tour?
Extension.
Or the or the conservation.
Since September.
It's one of those dates, one of those dates that they wanted to have a meeting.
It's at twenty six.
What is it?
September.
Oh, okay.
September twenty sixth, one to five, kind of like we did last time.
After a meeting.
We guys get there at one.
Okay. In their office or we don't?
We usually meet at their office up there on the, whatever it is, Waterhouse Road, where's it? Which one's which?
Well, they have ours, we keep it.
No, it's part of the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right.
I don't know why.
It's conservation. That we don't want us.
I thought we.
Yeah.
Library tablet types. And so, yeah. We have potential litigation.
Yeah.
Was that same, was that?
And we're inviting in. Aggressive. Okay. Gotcha. Thanks. Thank you.
No, Nancy's Ryan's the executive session, so we can't complain to him without.
Yeah, he has, he has too many of them. Jumped the rails.
You saw my, you saw my thunder, Mr. McKinley. That was my, that's gonna be my only joke, is that I, plenty's right off.
Contaminated him some. Executive session, I think.
Yeah, after some discussion, I started looking around other counties to see what it said, the administrators and stuff, and I found that one of them.
Holy cow.
Any others like that?
I remember, I want to bring a K C A meetings or discussing something and one of the administrators got up and says, our problem is that commissioners go out and talk to the department heads without checking with me first.
I remember that, yeah.
I didn't I didn't know what county she was from, but I went, huh.
Wow, that's a different approach.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Think I'd be rethinking that.
Pretty quick. Well, that's why I said, I could see getting county administrator with a very defined role.
I don't like the idea that go between, people talked about, why don't you get one, why don't you get one, well.
Well, I'm sure you've heard from city commissioners talking about what pain it is.
Yeah.
Manhattan, but.
That's a very expensive position on top of it. So if you're going to do that, you've got to get dollar for dollar value back out of it.
Yeah.
You're just increasing government, basically.
I will say this, just to kids, right? Especially with my city background, I've served on, I've served under city manager and in city administrator forms and the city administrator is very, very similar to the county administrator. And I think one of the things I love about our organization is that you guys go and talk to it to the department heads, right? I think it's just so efficient, right?
Well, they'll call us as per.
I mean, I can understand the department's perspective. You've got three people to deal with instead of one, but if, you know, as long as everybody is open dialogue and open communication, I mean.
Getting caught up to date on stuff.
I, I just don't, I mean, I've seen the good and the bad of it, right? And I like how we do things, you know. Just throwing that out there.
Yeah, Sean E doesn't have administrative. They're the only ones bigger than us that don't have something. Let's turn them on through the list, let's see.
Is that more county?
Yeah, they're good administrator. And even the ones, all the ones below us, most of them. There goes down to a certain level and then the smaller ones though.
Yeah. I mean, I can understand why it's.
It's like one of the costs. One of the ones I can work from town because I don't know why we'd have one, we don't have that much going on in our county.
No reason for it.
But. So much counties. Well, I've also said here, I mean, you deal with the, just the unincorporated part of the county, it's only twelve thirteen thousand, each one of the cities. You know, as a, as by population has a pretty large council, the city, you know, that's city managers, so.
I would say that, I would say that if we didn't have all of the organizational infrastructure that we already have, right? But our department is doing a really good job of coordinating with each other. And that, that's really the function of a, I'm sorry, I, I, I just talk about this, I've actually taught in an M B A program before, and so it's not like I don't believe in professional management. I do, but our organization is so optimized for this model already with our department head meetings and everything that really a lot of the function of an administrator, not that I'm saying you shouldn't ever consider it. You know, a lot of the, a good administrator is trying to, you know, foster communication between people, right? And we're already pretty good at that, so. For what it's worth.
So looking for that, because I was size of the county, there's seven county that are less than two thousand people.
Really?
Yeah. Those are the ones with more deer than people.
Yeah.
Our cattle.
More, more cattle than people. Clark County.
And one of them, what was, I think it was Butler. Got it set. Oh, was there some of that going on? How we doing that? Administrator.
Well, they're, and they're just, they're the one, they're not that much.
No, it's funny. Their administrator really just does the budget, like he's. Oh. Uh, at K C C A, yeah. Ryan, I can't remember his last name. Pretty sharp guy.
It was an interesting discussion.
Probably, a lot of it depends on success, and their success is gonna depend whatever the culture is of that particular organization, because each one has its own history. Yeah. And they're not identical. Yeah. I don't know. Campbell is not a cookie cutter solution, I don't think. It's kind of like when people suddenly expand the commission. Okay, that can work.
Some of those ones have expanded to smaller counties. These guys have, they're like, each one of them represents two or three thousand people.
Sometimes it gets offered. Not, not about a recent expansion, it's just got nothing to do with that. A lot of times it seems we dream about a drive to dilute whatever authority is currently being exercised on the commission. Yeah, well, we're gonna get more people. And then that'll solve this. Well, instead of, if you don't like the way somebody's doing something, there's an obvious solution. Yeah. But it doesn't involve changing the structure of the government. Be interested to see how that transition works over across the way in Park County.
Because it can, no, it's one can have four out of the five commissioners we knew.
Yeah.
Except I had mentioned names, there were so many. They have those candidates on in focus. And one of them. I went. They started talking, asking questions, that person had no idea how the county works, their, their answers did not match up what actually happens in the county. Uh, you need to study it a little better if you. You mentioned names. Someone I thought would know better.
It's not.
We think they do some research, which is attempt to get into the.
Interesting, um. Caleb Colepecker. Got drafted by the, in the first round. We never had, I.
Yeah, they had, um. Pitcher a couple of years ago.
I thought he was in the first round too.
They said, because they were saying that he was only the second guy.
Okay. I made a big deal about that yesterday and I thought he was like the thirty third pick or something. He's playing. He's, he's on, yeah, he's, he's with the Cubs. And playing that.
Football baseball.
Yeah, he had a he had a hell of a scouting combine apparently. Well, he just shot right up the list.
Yeah, post season.
Yeah, dude, too. And the kid from out in Hayes. Played for Tennessee, probably drafted in the second round, I think, too.
It is interesting, different counties operate differently.
Yeah. And I was out in D C in February, had a chance to talk to the Ford County guy, I don't know if he's a manager administrator, pretty sharp guy, but he interacts pretty good with the commissioners there, so they've got a good working relationship, which probably different than some of the others, but obviously.
Yeah, that's even in writing on the website, commissioners lead the city.
Should talk to John. Yeah, see if it was that, you can say it there. I remember him saying that it was, it was a change for him because he only did go through the administrator, never never talked to the commissioners. And they've got a couple of good ones out there at the time. Dr. Clifford, he was now at the State House, and Long Fish, and a couple of others, but, um, but, uh, yeah. He said that was a change for him, having to interact with the commissioners instead of the administrator, but so he'd have, he'd have a different perspective on that.
It was too hard to be outside, so I spent a lot of time, you know, when they started talking about just looking at like, it's different counties.
Yeah, on our list, there's always some something, something like that that will pop up when I ask a question.
I haven't done anything on there in a long time, and then all of a sudden this one popped up, and all of a sudden was dialogue, yeah. It's good, I mean, that's what it's supposed to be for. Also, I didn't look at all, it's no, looks like not the line for less on up, I think there was a soup. To me, it's there on down, nobody does.
I don't know how that got started here. It's been, please, that was the fact I won't remember, movie decision.
It's an interesting, well, not that. Mission. Office.
I've seen a few.
Each other in here.
I've seen a few of them, yeah. Because Sages County's got a pretty tight in tail, it's just literally cable around there, and they just kind of sits around, you know, it's, it was pretty crowded, just they had a big public hearing or something, I don't know what they would be doing, I think people would be standing up in the hallway, I think.
Have to hold it in this different location.
Yeah, maybe that's true too.
They have one meeting, it's a meeting within the every one, kind of like what, and a lot of what they call a work session, you know, which clear what the difference is, I guess you can't pass anything, it's disgusting.
Yeah, you, you do hear from a lot of people and and then you work through your plans, but you don't know anything.
Yeah, that's, 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 you know, certain level, you've got so many such populations.
And that's the end of the set here, we meet twice a week, so.
Doesn't say what time, what you have to do.
They talked about.
In terms of coma, you just have to have a printed agenda, what you're gonna talk to, a location, a time, and it just, it has to be open to the public. As far as I know, you don't even have to let the public speak, you just gotta be open for another. To be able to see, yeah.
I am in the hats, that's what my time to get. Commissioners, I have a, I have a question for feedback, right? After um, Evan and I were just having a powwow, and then after we were talking, the debate was whether either of us could pull off hats like Clancy does, right? And so I would love your feedback to figure out if you guys think I could, I could make that next step in my style.
Well, since you're in, since you're in Craig's cock shoes, what you really should be doing is bow tie. Yeah. He was a bow tie guy, yeah. And if we want to color coordinate and fashion the hat with the bow tie, we can, we could talk about that.
Okay, all right, well, I just, I just.
I got two of them when I quit, I gave them to the. I got a couple of those, that's, that's not, that's just not.
I don't know about ties, I've never had, never tried a tie once.
Except everyone's, usually I'm just some days I used to bring, the next days, oh, this is too long. And we make three or four times, I can't, certain days, it just doesn't.
And puts some markers, marks on the back of the tie.
Cause some of them are longer, not necessarily. But usually this is the best, yours is small, but I just.
That was a conference.
It was really good.
Good.
Yeah. Very, very good education this time. Well, not that they're not always good, but it was very good.
Good deal.
Lot of on, on trend topics, um, A I.
Yeah, makes sense.
For, uh, the new, the new professionalism, um, that drew a lot, it was a very long conversation. Work-life balance as a retention strategy, things that we've been very, very much on point as to what we're experiencing here right now, so it was good.
Good.
One of our Kansas treasures, um, received the National Treasure of the Year award.
Which one?
Uh, Joe, there's a lot of from Bedford County.
Yeah, okay.
Um, so.
Yeah, and congratulations, you moved up a position too, babe.
Are now president elect. Very exciting.
It's good to hear.
And so the convention center, when we arrived, um, was having a anime. Anime. Convention. Very interesting, uh. Very interesting. And much different than the convention center when I left, because all all the people were coming in for NICO.
Yeah. I saw some pictures and stuff. Of course, I didn't go. Go ahead.
All right. Uh, good morning. Shiloh Hager, Riley County Treasurer. Um, unfortunately, while I was gone last week at the conference, um. I received a resignation from one of my customer service rep, um, positions. And so I'm here today to request, um. The ability to be able to fill that position. Um, I it's not, I've. Repeated it over and over again. We really need to have that front counter staff. Fully in order to be able to, um. Cover for illnesses, vacation days. And we do have one person a driver's license every day and. And, uh, so it's just, I feel it's a much needed position in order to provide the customer service that, um, is expected of our office.
So this is the resignation, not somebody moving around?
Yeah, it's a resignation due to relocation. So this person is moving to another state. Which, I mean, this person has a pretty good tenure in an entry level position and is a great employee. And we would love to keep her, but I mean. You know, her family's gonna.
Gotcha.
And this morning was my first opportunity to speak to her and I I did. It was hard for me to to. I really don't want to let her go. I don't want to see her leave, but I completely understand her circumstances at this point.
Don, I don't want to read too far into your question, but in the past, we've talked about whether or not the turnover rate for this type of position is too high. And I really don't believe it is for an entry level position. But if commissioners are interested in my next report, I can just look specifically at the customer service turnover rate and compare that, you know, industry wide. Is there this, this job is pretty common. I mean, not specifically what they do in the treasurer, but the skills and knowledge that they need is is a. Common job that we can compare to in our community.
I'd move to approve the request to fill customer service rep, uh, one treasurer's office.
I would second that.
Been moved and approved your, um. Request to fill the customer service one, uh, representative in the county treasurer's office, on favor.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
With my monthly updates. Starting off, June, we have 470 calls to service, which is up a little bit. But as you can see, when we break down the station, that's Station Two was still previous. And that's a good, good portion of that, those extra calls. So, but Station One, 148 calls, Station Two, 152, that number's coming down, getting them the help that they need.
Seeing one of those calls with my own, with my own eyes.
Right, so that's, it just takes time. But three, 73 calls, Station Four out there, 468, and then we had 29 out of the Leonerville Station. Continue to work on building construction related topics. In Leonerville, there's three cracks up in the ceiling that, just from all of the other stuff that we had with the, with the drying of the, of the timber. So they were there yesterday, today, or I'm sorry, Saturday, Sunday, and then I should be back there again today fixing those cracks. So, but they're, they're all com- comfortable that it's all tied to that same, same issue. So, but, and then when I're done with that, then they're gonna have to paint all the ceilings in the, in the station. So that's, that'll be the next step. So, headquarters continuing on with footings in the walls. So they've got just a few footings left to get forward, it looks like. So, but they're making really, really good progress. And then me, I would say with the builders, the architects, I was not there at the last meeting. I had double booked myself. But sounds like everything is right on target, going well. So it's a, it is a behind the back activity, there are people all over the place. So, we continue to be part of the mental health and substance misuse working group and task forces. So, continue with the hands only CPR, stop bleeding training. Continue to move over checklists, those are going very well. That's gonna be, it's gonna be a two-year project, I think, for some of those, it just takes time. You know, we're preparing for events in my season. That's actually the email we'll go out to our staff today, saying, hey, you know, that's again, we're gonna start putting them together and then we'll start bidding on them. So the bidding will, will take place mid, mid-August. So first half, we can get them signed and we can build. But that's coming, so I'll be here before we know it. People that are really active on this training, our staff did a very good job. They're really shout out to, to Tim Shuck from RCPD, and Mark Whitehair from Manhattan Fire, and Alex Posman from RCMS. Those are the guys who do the work and put this all together, and that they have their teams as well. But long wait for all three of them. So they are, they are spent when they're done, on Friday afternoon. But, but we couldn't go it down, but thank you through all of the, to you and all of the other collective bodies who helped us make this happen. So, but it is tremendous training. But as you said this morning, Commissioner, it's unfortunate we have to do this, but we do, so. Finishing up driver training for all of our staff. And we continue with case reviews with our medical director and, and getting out now on calls and observing field performance for our staff. They were giving me a hard time today because Josh started an IV on a call the other day. So if I asked him, when was the last time I started one, it's been a while. So, but I'm gonna hear about that for a while, so. Continuing with the review of all calls, pre-hospital trauma life support class just wrapped up. And then it came on the protocol development, development and training. So outreach, when we did car seat check lines, that's gonna start picking back up as well. You know, we have a purple power play here coming up pretty soon and some of those other, once school gets started, there'll be more demos and asking us to come up to, to visit grade schools and, and classrooms and daycares and so. And break down the call volume. Nothing, nothing surprising there, Wednesday and Saturday. So that's typical. Wednesday, because people are sick, they'll, they'll be sick on Monday and Tuesday, think they can, you know, they'll just get better. And then usually by Wednesdays, when we start to see those general malaise, I just don't feel good, and I've been sick for a few days. Dehydrated, you know, every time I sit up, I get dizzy, that type of stuff. So, pretty, pretty common, and that's what we see there, so. Hourly range. You know, I, I noticed that it was, we were a little busier, a little earlier in the evenings in June, and so students aren't in town.
So yeah, but midnight to two load, isn't there? No, it usually is.
Right, because the students aren't here, but, but they'll be back in town here in another, another few weeks, and we'll see that flip again. So back to what is typical. And then top five reasons, transfers was actually the highest. And, and that could be anywhere, you know, transfer from Via Christi to, to Vica, to Kansas City, Wichita, Omaha. Sometimes that also included if we take a patient from Via Christi to, back to nursing home outside of the county. So, some of those things, so. The non-reported, that's tied to, that calls to Station Two's area, because those are, they don't have, they don't have a, a complaint, they just need help.
Just need help.
Yeah, so that's why that's, why that is so high. Any questions for me?
I may, oh yes, for the, the transfers, do those pay? I mean, I know, I'm sure it's all tied to insurance. Do they pay? Well, enough to cover driving a long ways.
You know, maybe, it, it really does, it, it really does depend on the insurance. So if it's, if it's somebody who has Medicaid or Medicare, they don't shade very well. You know, the best thing we get out of that is $14 a mile. Love it, so, one way. So, so not, I mean, we make some money, but not really. So, I just wanted to. Was that, you sure any, oh, no. But I mean, there are, there are, I mean, I know, and you said.
Almost after a while.
Yeah, it, it really is, I mean, there, there are departments who don't do them.
You don't have to do them.
You don't, we don't cooperate, correct? But it's, it's really kind of a, can you, an expectation of your community that if you need to go someplace else, to get, to care that you need that, well, that's why we're here. So, it would, yeah, there, there are departments who don't do them, and they really creates them a lot of faults. You know.
I mean, those guys. Yeah, yeah, they're getting paid really, they're exactly, stationed, exactly, on that part, it doesn't matter. They're just mildly just thinking the vehicles.
Wearing there on the vehicles, yeah. That is, that is true. So, and yeah, so you figure, I, I think it's 100 and, we build 120, 126 miles is what it is, round trip from, from Via Christi to Stromont, where we report St. Francis. So yeah, so we build 63 miles, because that's one way. So, but yeah, so each one of those is, is at least 125 miles. And when we do 70, 74 of those, whatever it was a month, it's a lot of miles, yeah.
Might as well put on an ambulance, it takes four years to get.
Absolutely. Okay, all right, thank you. What do you think?
We're gonna have to let that go. We're gonna reach 93 this morning, so time for our press conference, and I have a back and presentation to give.
She'll be right behind us.
Well, I'll tell you what, we'll let everybody else do their remote, but right, we'll have great feeling. We can come back. I hope that's not a walking can. Did you check the water again?
Oh, good morning. We reach that time of the year when it's time to be watering our plants, so people may have already been doing this. But in my situation, you know, nature's been providing moisture and haven't had to really do anything. But we are 100-degree temperatures, plants will benefit from moisture, just to fulfill their growing needs. We're gonna have a program Saturday, 10:00 a.m. at Blueville, that's right, so Saturday, and we'll talk about different strategies on watering plants. Yeah, I brought my, this is a irrigation probe, actually, but yeah, technically you can use it for watering. Determine if you need to stick it in the ground, it'll go down to where it hits the dry spot. And a lot of our plants, they can water down to 12 inches, that'd be ample, for established plants, anyway. So you stick this in the ground, and it goes, it hits the dry spot. Other different techniques, initial water week is a good rule of thumb. We also do a Mesodat, K-State's computer system, so you can determine moisture content of the soil, and how much rain we're getting, at least at those weather stations. Right now, saturated down two inches, about 47%, so that's, that's still okay, the moisture, if you got plants that use a system that deep. And, but probably want to start thinking about watering if you haven't, haven't done that. We do have an abundance of water typically, but it's still a resource that we don't want to overutilize. A lot of people lean towards the over-irrigation system. You do know houseplants get overwatered a lot, and now our landscapes with the in-ground systems, somebody just turns it on in April. It's rained in May, June, and if it kept going, you overwatered your plants. So, again, this Saturday, 10:00 a.m., we'll talk about watering techniques at Louisville Garden Center. We also have coming up a county fair, and one of the things we have going on for the 4-H youth is to grow the largest tomato. Try to do a different vegetable each year, so kids can kind of learn about different vegetables and how to grow them. I won't throw this, but I'll hand this to you.
That's technically a fruit. Is it gracious?
Technically a fruit, yes. Botanically, we put fruit, but according to our government, it is a vegetable, so it's taxed appropriately.
I'm just gonna leave that one alone.
So hopefully, some, some youth will bring out some large tomatoes, larger than that even, and we'll see who wins. That is on July 25th, and it is open to the public, as far as our, a lot of our stuff is open to the public, but I'm concerned about fruits and vegetables and flowers. You can bring exhibits out from 10 to noon on July 25th, and we'll judge them in the afternoon and see how you, how you want them.
Okay.
I don't need it, I got more.
Did you grow that in your garden?
Say what you want, I'm sorry.
Did you grow that in your garden?
Yes.
Yes.
That's what I do.
What's variety on that?
So we offered Big Zach, so that's Big Zach.
Hi Zach.
Catalog said four to six pounds, that's 20 ounces, so it's, it's a baby one.
Four to six pounds for a tomato?
Yeah, I don't know what you do with that much, but.
Feed a family with that.
Make juice out of it, I guess.
It's awesome.
Can do it there, there you go. Did I fill enough time?
Yeah.
You did, okay. That's a fair. We'll be there. You wanna go ahead, Vivian first?
Vivian Lada, Public Information Officer for Riley County. And just a reminder that as of July 1st, some Riley County government offices began operating on a new schedule with new customer service hours. The building across the way at 110 Courthouse Plaza is open to the public Monday through Thursday from 7:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And Friday from 7:30 a.m. to noon. This includes the Appcraiser, county clerk, and elections, there's an all-star next to elections, because they've relocated to this building. But the hours are consistent with the 110 Courthouse Plaza building. The treasurer and motor vehicles, planning and development slash environmental health, the register of deeds, and Riley County case state extension, where our buddy Greg is. Register of deeds and case state extension are available by appointment Friday afternoons, and they ask that you please call ahead to schedule those Friday afternoon appointments with them. Departments and other buildings, such as the health department, district, district court, and public works will maintain their current schedules. And all full-time employees will continue to work a minimum of 40 hours each week. And then for more information, please visit Riley, the Riley County website at rileycountyks.gov, or call us at 785-537-6300. Okay, I'll send that to you.
Are we ready? Okay. For the last item today is, I've got a special retirement plaque. From how to Teresa Stewart, and our health department, taking your APRN and family practice services, you've been there for seven years, and will be very valuable and a consummate professional, and gonna be very, very, these are always moments for me that are always bittersweet. Because I hate losing our employees, and as particularly ones that's obviously of importance as you've been, but certainly one we should give us some luck in whatever your future endeavors are. And so, yeah, I'm glad you're joining us here, and I will present you with this plaque. For seven years in service to Riley County, which we appreciate both as an organization and I'm sure on your behalf. You're very welcome, yes, and you can have the mic if you want to say a few words about your time, and we'll get a picture over here after we're done.
Thank you for this, I really appreciate it. It's been, it is a very bittersweet week, counting down the hours, but I've got lots of trips planned with my husband, so we're anxious to start a new chapter. And you would think that for as long as I've worked for the county for seven years, and I know this location has not changed, but I still had to put the door thing in Google Maps to get here. So, I was on the phone with Danielle, and I think I'm lost, walking down the street. Anybody who knows me and knows my driving skill, this is not this story, this is the truth, so. Thank you so much, you will all be dearly, dearly missed, and I love my time working in Riley County, learned a lot, definitely learned a lot here. It's a great place to work, great organization, great leadership, and thank you very much.
Want a good photo?
Just right over in the session.
Greg says, he doesn't buy it.
And one, two, three. All right, thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you. I hope you're enjoying the driving, I'm sure.
That seems everything? I should have, that's great, oh, no, no, it's okay. Or whoever wants to.
They complained in the schedule when we left.
Well, there you go. And, and Commissioner, I don't know, I had, Russell may have been called away, right? So, but I can hopefully fill in the blanks in his absence, because we've got two, um, did you plan to, or you, you want me to summarize this?
I'm not next.
Oh, you are, until 10. Oh.
Been a victim of a pool attempt.
Very untouchable.
Everybody saw who was on the schedule next, that's the empty room.
Yeah. Clearly, the usual reaction.
Good morning Commissioners, Clancy Holman, Colonel. Despite the seating.
Maybe not by Thursday, huh?
I don't know, I'm just judging by the seating right here. This is the project list up to date. Don't think there's one item on here in particular that I needed to bring in speed on, but if you have questions on anything, certainly let me know. Just scroll through here and see if there's something. I mean, they usually reflect pretty much the same status of things, but it's, and again, there is some historic information on here. I do need to go back and bring it up to date on starting a couple of these items in terms of categories because you requested maybe six months time period, so I'll do that with the exception of the couple that I'm making the judgment that maybe it's worthwhile keeping some history on a couple of projects. That's all I have, do you have questions on anything?
I do. On the new nuisance abatement act, have you started any actions there?
Well, there's been a lot of preliminary work done by those leading the coup. A great deal of groundwork that's had to be done by him, by Ryan, getting, working with the department because there are going to be some procedural things that we need to have ready to go as of that date. And I'm confident that shortly after that date, when it's effective, some of that will. Groundwork's been laid with a couple of the properties that have been a problem historically and working with the department with planning and development, they've advised those individuals that the rules change under the law beginning July 1st. This, again, not because the county's gonna suddenly take a hard line on anything, it's simply we have a tool we should have had, in my view, should have had a long time ago, which is when someone will not voluntarily comply. And we first have a finding from a district court that there's a nuisance on a given property, then responsibility goes, then authority to go ahead and move forward comes back to the commission and you decide, no one else, you decide whether or not we move forward under that statute and still continue to try and get cooperation, but if it isn't possible because the owner is not able or willing to cooperate eventually, it will be taken care of and the cost will be assessed against that property. It's pretty much as straightforward as that, but I appreciate the question. We've known, obviously, for some time that that's the date when things will, that additional tool in the toolbox will be available and the county's gonna use it when it's appropriate to use. Because again, we have three years, just like Sedgwick County. We anticipate that at the end of those three years, certainly not before, we'll have the opportunity to go back to the legislature and show, this is how we did or didn't. And I'm hoping that what we are able to do is what Sedgwick County did. Once we had the authority and we made it clear to this given property that this is something that could happen if you force us into that position, but we prefer not to and be able to say, we haven't even had to use it one time. To me, that would be a success. We'll see if it works out that way.
And I was effective July 1st, exactly?
Yeah, became effective July 1st.
Became checked.
Yeah, but again, there's some initial groundwork, there's some groundwork that had to be done and that's gonna include going back, going into district court to get a finding of actual nuisance on any of those properties that's fired. So we've had some deadlines established with a couple of, at least one individual I know to get this done under the prior proceedings. If that happens or happened, then that will fine, if not, then the office will move forward. You have nothing else at all, I guess? Stay with her. I want to get a bun.
No, 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 I was just messing.
No coup attempt.
I was just, I figured. I couldn't lose this.
Thanks, we think we changed the name already too.
That's the part I gotta tell him, he's gotta change his name.
So, your Clancy.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, yeah, we're not gonna invest in a new name, but.
I've always been fond of that name.
Get used to it.
There you go.
That's an heirloom, maybe. Any else is?
Who's making the BLTs for me?
Can't have to get like sourdough bread or something, because I don't know.
My experience has always been like with the big tomatoes, they're always split on the top, so you only get maybe, you don't get that top part because you have to cut them off.
Do it like that.
Your buds get in there.
It's fully ripe or not, is it?
Two days.
Yeah.
20 ounces supposed to get up to four pounds.
I can't believe it.
Well, it's not gonna grow anymore, but it'll ripen a little bit.
I can't imagine, those stocks must be really big to support those tomatoes. Those are falling on the ground all the time. Never been fond of the big tomatoes since I'm not my couple anymore. I didn't plant any vegetables this year.
Oh. I mean, if I would have just looked up. There you go.
Damn kids.
For a day for one person.
Well, that's something. If you can think of anybody, if anything. Didn't even give me the extra money I come with. I trust you. After that, I'm not extra. Sunday, ceremony. Right, right.
In one.
The best, you can't get that. Didn't get that, you can't get that. That's the worst, that was one of the worst construction, traffic. That's all. I've been talking to some of the times that probably ruined my chemistry. I'm not sure about this, but one time we did, we had to go two miles down the road. Next, they're gonna make John Studdler and right-hand hold the, his name's awesome. The whole entirety is. Mm-hmm. Good page, for you to make, Clark. Everyone's had social, just talk with them. It was making me hungry. That is.
Have that.
Oh, I think, that's ambitious. The multi-day tomato project.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, yeah, still needs to write the note in there.
Yeah.
Now, how long we need? 20 minutes. We're gonna talk fast. Oh, you already had to set up? Like you knew or something? Vivian knows everything, guys. I dare you to try to carve it.
Would far relax, we have.
Just like a pumpkin, all the worse. Believe that, it's solid, there's not much. Okay, we're at 10 o'clock. I move the county commission, including Chairman Ford, Vice Chairman Kendall.
I move the county commission, including Chairman Ford, Vice Chairman Kinley, and Commissioner Fochy recess into executive session. A potential litigation. With Brian Parker, Deputy County Counselor, Attorney for the Commission, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, an exception to the Kansas Open Meeting Act. Open meeting act, open meeting to resume in the county commission chambers at ten twenty A M. John Ellerman, Director of Public Works, Evan Millam, Assistant County Engineer, and Russell Stukey, Emergency Service Director and Emergency Management will be present during the portion of the session.
I would second that.
They moved and seconded that the county commission. Uh, moving to executive session on. Uh, we should be getting those. To executive session of potential litigation. Uh, with Brian Parker, Deputy County Counselor, we should be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship exception. Uh, to the Kansas Open Meetings Act with the open meeting resuming in the county commission chamber at ten twenty A M. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
I move the board of county commissioners come out of executive session.
I would second that.
Been moved and seconded the board of county commissioners come out of executive session. All in favor.
Nice.
I move the record reflect action. Should we take them consistent with the consensus reaching the record session?
I would second that.
Been moved and seconded the record reflect action. Shall we take it consistent with the consensus meeting executive session? All in favor.
Nice.
Guess that was the last item. Well, besides the law board meeting, but that doesn't change anything. Um, I don't have anything else on this Monday, so.
Good.
Yeah, I would make a motion to. Adjourn the seven July fifteenth meeting of the Board of Raleigh County Commissions.
Second.
Move the executive to adjourn the July fifteenth meeting of the Raleigh County Commission. All in favor.